Well, good morning and Happy New Year. We're going to get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Amanda Esping is the pastor at Our Lord's Lutheran Church. She's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Greiner if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Most good and gracious Lord, we give you thanks that you have brought together today this group of servants. Servants of all kinds are gathered here that serve you in so many ways throughout this community and serve the people here. As we endeavor to give our lives to protect, to help, to encourage, and to strengthen the people of Oklahoma City, we especially remember those who physically put their lives on the line. And we ask that you be with this group of servants this morning. Let your light shine upon this place and show a path where there was no path seen. Let your spirit of reconciliation and gentleness be in everything that is done. And may the peace and joy which passes all understanding guide the thoughts and the hearts of all who gather here. Be with all those we carry in our hearts and those who weigh on our minds. Let them rest in your peace that we may be fully present to the work you have called us here to do today. And give us all those things for which we do not even know to ask. All this we ask, and we lift up to you, good Lord, this day. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy New Year. Is it on? Yeah, it's on. It's my privilege this morning to swear in a new municipal judge. Ed Hasbrook has been selected by the council to fill a vacancy on the bench at the municipal court, and it's really an honor for me to be asked to swear him in this morning. Ed, if you'll come forward. Just repeat after me. I, Edward D. Hasbrook,
I, Edward D. Hasbrook,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support, obey, and defend
I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
and that I will not knowingly
and that I will not knowingly
receive directly or indirectly
receive directly or indirectly
any money or other valuable thing
any money or valuable thing
for the performance or nonperformance of any act
for the performance or nonperformance of any act
or duty pertaining to my office
or duty pertaining to my office
other than the compensation allowed by law.
other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear that I will faithfully discharge my duties
I further swear that I will faithfully discharge my duties
as a municipal judge for the city of Oklahoma City
as a municipal judge for the city of Oklahoma City
to the best of my ability.
best of my abilities. I'm blessed to have a lot of people in my life. My wife and my sister. It's important to have family. Just a couple of words. First, I praise God for this opportunity. I'd like to thank the council, Councilman White for the kind words. I'd like to thank my family, my friends, and my colleagues because you made me better personally and professionally. I consider this an honor and I'm humbled by it. Thank you.
We have a series of honors to hand out today. We're going to start with an honor that has been bestowed upon our tennis center and our Parks Department. So Mark, why don't you come up and I'm going to let you kind of lead us through this process. But I think most of you are aware that we have one of the top tennis facilities in the United States for public tennis codes. We had always had that potential, but it was really not until Mark Allen kind of decided that we could do better that the tennis center kind of elevated itself from one of the best to the best in this region and one of the best in the entire country. And so this city really does owe a sense of gratitude to Mark Allen and his family for all of the care and nurturing they have taken in the Oklahoma City Tennis Center and turned it into this facility that now is drawing the top tennis players from around the region. And as you might expect, the success at our tennis center has not gone unnoticed nationally. And so I'm going to hand the microphone over to Mark so he can acknowledge the staff and everyone else that's been a part of this renaissance of Oklahoma City's tennis facility. Mark, thank you so much, and I'm going to let you talk about these awards.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Mayor Cornet. And I guess I'd begin by thanking the mayor, city manager Jim Couch, and the rest of the city council for their support and their assistance in helping to bring the center to national prominence, and that was demonstrated this year by two awards that our city and the center received. The first was by the United States Tennis Association, which is the governing body for tennis throughout the world. And we were one of six municipal facilities that were honored as the Tennis Facility of the Year this year, and we received that award in September. And then last month, Tennis Industry Magazine, which is one of the largest publications for tennis in the United States, honored the Oklahoma City Tennis Center as its Municipal Center of the Year this year. And so we'll proudly display those awards at the center. And as the mayor mentioned, we have 22 national tournaments this year coming to Oklahoma City, which brings a lot of visitors. In Oklahoma City allows them to experience our great city. And we ourselves have a number of up-and-coming nationally-ranked juniors in our program. So again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city manager. Thank you, city council. We appreciate it, and we look forward to more success. Yes, absolutely. Well, we couldn't have done this. My wife Jennifer is here in the front aisle with us, and two of our pros, Tim Ritchie, Christian Panzavalli, and our third pro, Steve Henry, was unable to be here today. So again, thank you all so much.
Good opportunity for us to remind those in the community, if you know of a young person who might have some interest in tennis, we'd love to help them grow that. So feel free to call our tennis centers and get people involved. We have a number of youth programs, adult programs, there's leagues out there. But we really do want to grow youth tennis in Oklahoma City. I think it's a great opportunity for kids to get some exercise and be a part of a game they can play the rest of their lives. So feel free to call the tennis center and get kids involved. Mark, thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Show our appreciation to Mark. Our first council meeting of the year allows us to honor our employees of the year, and I'm going to ask Jerita Becker to come up. Jerita? Jerita works in the Development Services Department. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Herrs Jerita Baker has been a city employee for 10 years and is an administrative specialist in the Animal Welfare Division of the Development Services Department. Herrs Jerita manages all administrative duties, including human relations and finance, and assists with collateral development, social media, and marketing. Herrs she also oversees several programs, including adoption outreach, the pet food banks, spay and neuter, and the internal safety program. Herrs Jerita Baker is consistent, extremely competent, and highly respected by the animal welfare staff. Herrs Jerita has taken on many responsibilities this year and has done so with intention and grace. Herrs Jerita works hard and is always available to help others with their duties. She spends many hours on weekends attending special events to assist her staff in any way she can, and she is heavily leaned on by her coworkers for her extensive knowledge of city policy and procedure. Herrs Jerita excels in her role at animal welfare thanks to her organizational skills and her passion for animals. Herrs this council desires to recognize Jerita Baker for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Jerita Baker, 2016 South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Employee of the Year.
Now, before you applaud, we have to vote on this. Is there a motion from council? And cast your votes. What a surprise. It's unanimous. Now you can show your appreciation. It just dawned on me what a correlation there is between the public-private partnership we have in tennis with Mark Allen and his organization helping out our tennis center with the private sector help we've also received in the Animal Welfare Department. This department has come so far over the last 10 or 15 years to be one of the parts of the city that we're most proud of. But all of that is necessary only if we have dedicated employees like Jerita. So Jerita, I know, I'm going to give you the opportunity to thank your coworkers down there at the Animal Welfare Department. But there was a time last summer when we actually had zero animals that were adoptable in the center. We had placed so many in adoption, and our spay and neutering programs have been so successful that we actually reduced it on that one special day, which we promoted heavily, down to zero. Now, the sobering aspect of that is a few hours later, animals started coming in and the number wasn't zero any longer. So we have to maintain our stance that spay and neutering programs are extremely important. We have the dollars out there in the private sector to get any animal the type of care they need to stop the ongoing proliferation, is that the word I want? Of animals. And again, I'll close the way I started. This department has come so far, and everyone out there cares about animals, but there are ways to show it. And Jerita gets up every day, dedicated to making the city a better place for our animals, and we appreciate your work.
I just have to say that it's easy to get up and go to my job. I really, really love what I do, and I came to the city about 11 years ago, and I was very blessed to come to the city and become a public servant. And three years ago, I joined Animal Welfare, and it's been the best move that I could have ever made. Thank you all. Thank you, John Gary, for being my mentor and my friend. And thank you to council, South Oklahoma City Quanis Club. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Our employee of the year.
And thank you to my coworkers. These people out there are just dedicated. It's just crazy. It's a good place to be.
Thank you. Thank them for it. All right, I'm going to ask Benny Fulkerson to come forward. While Benny's making his way up, I'll allow you to know that Benny is one of our many firefighters in the community and has been named our Fire Department Employee of the Year. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read that.
Herrs Chief Benny Fulkerson has been a city employee for 19 years and is a Public Information Officer for the Fire Department. Herrs Chief Fulkerson responds to media requests, prepares news stories and news releases, and maintains the Fire Department's website and social media accounts. Herrs Chief Fulkerson, since taking on the role of Public Information Officer, has improved the quality of interaction with the media and information provided to the public in a very short time. Herrs Chief Fulkerson has worked hard to establish positive relationships with the various media outlets by being responsive to their requests. He has done extensive work for the Fire Department's social media presence by constantly monitoring and updating accounts while ensuring that the information is always accurate and beneficial. Herrs Chief Fulkerson's attention to social media resulted in increasing the number of followers to 17,599 on Facebook and 7,026 on Twitter. Herrs Chief Fulkerson also updated the Fire Department's webpage to make it more interactive, providing timely and important public safety information to residents. Herrs Chief Fulkerson works day and night to provide public safety information to the public in a professional manner, putting the Fire Department and the city in the most positive light. Herrs this council desires to recognize Chief Benny Fulkerson for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Chief Benny Fulkerson, 2016 South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Firefighter of the Year.
Is there a motion? And a second. Cast your votes. Congratulations, Benny. Let's show our appreciation. That is for you. Obviously, we have around 1,000 firefighters making our lives more safe, and I think most of us in this room are old enough to remember a time when a great number of people died every year because of a fire. And through increased zoning operations, increased safety procedures, Benny and his staff have reduced that number to a relatively small number of people. They still need your help. We still need to be more diligent, but I'm very pleased at how far our Fire Department has come and the level of safety that exists in our community. Benny?
Well, again, thank you. Thank you very much. You know, I was thinking about this when I found out that this occurred, and as a third-generation firefighter, I have a deep and profound respect for our profession. And it's an honor for me to be able to be in a position where I can give back to a profession that has been so good to me and my family since 1943. My grandpa retired from this Fire Department back in 1963. And so again, I have deep roots here, and it means a lot to me to be able to give back to the community in this capacity. Very often, firefighters come to me and they say, hey Benny, you're doing a great job. We really appreciate what you're doing. And that's great, but I'm quick to point out to them that they're the ones doing all the hard work. I'm just a messenger. I'm just a guy passing this along, letting the media know what's going on, putting this stuff out there for the world to see, and I hope it's making a difference. Again, I appreciate the opportunity, and I thank you very much.
And our firefighters respond to all sorts of incidents, not just fire, as you know. But this week, because of the cold weather coming in, it might be a good chance, while we've got the microphone here, to remind people they have to be extra diligent with their space heaters and the idea that it's been fairly dry in Oklahoma City. I know we had rain yesterday, but it's been fairly dry and that fire danger is still out.
It is. You get me in my soapbox on this, I won't get out of here. Fireplaces, you've got to have those cleaned and inspected yearly. Your space heaters, keep those at least three feet away from anything that can burn. There's just so many things this time of year. Candles, you've got to wash those candles. Don't take them in the bedrooms. You know, use them on a hard, level, solid surface. Keep the kids away from them. There's just so many things that we could talk about. Follow us on social media. You'll see these things. And just be safe this winter because this is a very volatile time for us as firefighters. When it gets cold, we get very busy. And it's unfortunate for a lot of these citizens who lose so much. So be careful, please.
Firefighter of the Year, Benny Fulkerson. Mohammed Tabay. Mohammed, come on up. We have around 1,000 police officers. Mohammed Tabay is our Quanis Club Police Officer of the Year, and we have a resolution here.
Herrs Officer Mohammed Tabay has been a city employee for four years and is a patrol officer for the southwest division of the Police Department. Herrs Officer Mohammed Tabay actively enforces city ordinances and laws on the southwest side of Oklahoma City where he patrols. Officer Tabay handles calls for services, enforces traffic laws, and does proactive policing to keep the community safe. Herrs Officer Tabay is constantly patrolling his division and is familiar with subjects in his area, keeping a spreadsheet of felons he arrests. Herrs Officer Tabay, on September 20th, 2016, took initiative and successfully and safely located two suspects in a case of child abuse thanks to his tenacity and professionalism. Herrs Officer Tabay also showed exceptional police work in November of 2016 when he used his investigative skills to locate a suspect in a shooting and take him into custody. Herrs Officer Tabay has received recognition letters from his division major for apprehending the most felons in a month, and a letter of commendation from Chief Jester for his tenacity in arresting individuals for crimes against children. Herrs Officer Tabay continuously shows tenacity and initiative, making him an excellent police officer. Herrs this council desires to recognize Officer Mohammed Tabay for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Officer Mohammed Tabay, 2016 South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Police Officer of the Year.
Is there a motion? And a second. All right, cast your votes, and it's unanimous. And it was expressed to me by Chief City that Mohammed's going after the bad guys. That's his job. When crimes are committed, he's got to go find them and apprehend them. And to a certain extent, he lives all those police dramas that you watch on television. Can imagine how fearless this gentleman must be. But Mohammed told me he's an immigrant, grew up in Morocco, went to school at UCO, and stayed in Oklahoma City, and is now our South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Police Officer of the Year. Quite a story, Mohammed. Thank you very much for your commitment.
I would just, first of all, I would like to thank God and thank my family. I also would like to thank the mayor, city council, chief city, deputy chief Jester, and my major, Nicholas. I'm truly living the American dream. I appreciate what Oklahoma City has done for me, and Oklahoma has taken me as a son when I moved in here when I was 18 years old. I didn't know anybody. I barely spoke English, but I've come a long ways in 14 years. I am privileged and honored to serve the city that I live in, the city that I adopted as a home, and serve the citizens every day in any way I can. Thank you very much.
All right, we have our friends from OG&E that are here for a wonderful announcement. Come on up. We'll do this right up here. You got pictures?
We do have pictures.
Great, I'm just going to take a seat.
You want to come on up and... Mayor Cornet, City Manager Couch, ladies and gentlemen of the council. It's our honor this morning, from the guidance and direction of the city staff, we have been able to select a couple of areas to try out our new pilot program. And LED lighting, we've been hearing about it for years. It's now coming to reality. So to demonstrate and to let you know where this area is going to be and to give you a little bit more about the technology, we have some of our staff from OG&E. We have Director Scott Milonowski in products, Nancy Eberle from Product Dispersion, and then Tony Cooper, who will be giving the presentation. So go ahead, guys.
Good morning, thank you. I want to do a brief presentation on LED to pig about what Pat just said. We've been working on this for about five to seven years now, and it's been a long time coming, but we finally found a solution that we feel is not only good for OG&E, but most importantly, good for the community. And so we're really excited. And so one of the main objectives is to increase the value to customers by providing higher-quality, controllable lights. And we want to, that's going to lead to increased customer satisfaction, reduce lighting outages, remote dimming, remote on and off, and asset management. So there's a lot of benefits to LED lighting, but we want to hit on a couple of points that we feel are the ones that stand above. Improve efficiency and nighttime visibility. I think anybody that's driven through cities down the interstate, I mean, it's pretty obvious when a light's out. And so one of the things that we're hoping to do is to fix that extended bulb life. The current lighting that we have out there averages about two to three years. Now that's providing no tornadoes come through and blow them away, but bulbs tend to last about two to three years. LEDs are looking at around average 10-year lifespan. A lower cost, because we've created a new tariff to support this through working with the Oklahoma Corporate Commission, we expect an extensive ballpark average tariff reduction of about approximately 15%. One of the strongest features of this is now we will be able to have web-based lighting management, which we partner with SSN. They're a partner of ours, and we're going to work with them and utilize their software, which is called Streetlight Vision. It will give us failure notification, control and monitor capability, GPS tracking, and improve asset management. And then also, another big factor is we do have the potential going through LED for automated maintenance tickets leading to reduced call-ins. This is what is Streetlight Vision. It will be our lighting management system, allowing us to take advantage of the technology and the advanced controller. And this is just a snapshot of a big board of what we will see every day. In our current lighting situation right now, as many of you know, a lot of times you have to call us to let us know that the lights are out because there's no way to communicate. This software gives us that ability. Now we will be able to see these things minute by minute, hour by hour. We'll know if there's a problem. This software will give us that information. Getting a little bit more deeper dive into this, it will provide coordinates. We'll be able to know exactly which lights are out versus, again, running a truck roll. We will also be able to track them through serial number, MAC addresses, install and provisioning dates. That's important from an asset management standpoint. We want to know when we install a light versus, you know, when it's time to re-provision that light and some other factions as well. So what we've done is we've been working with city members here to come up with an idea, technology that we could do, and we're excited about this endeavor. We're going to install LED lights in two locations to showcase the functionality and benefits of advanced LED technology. We plan to maintain these lights for about two years, and we've identified Adventure District and Innovation District as the areas that we will install new lights. We plan to continue to collaborate with Oklahoma City and to access the abilities of the LED system, how it relates to maintenance, public acceptance, energy consumption of the new lighting system as well. New LED lights will roll into the new lighting tariff at the end of the demonstration. And here is just a snapshot of what we're looking at here. OKC Adventure District, as you see, we plan to put about 45 lights there, and we're also going to go at the OKC Innovation District as well. We're going to put 12 lights there. And we wanted to pick, obviously, visible areas that we can showcase what these lights can do. Obviously, with us moving forward with the tariff approval, OG&E now is in the mode of now we've got a plan ahead that we can go around system-wide replacement. And our plan is to go in an attrition model, which is basically if a light fails in service, then we will come out and replace it with an LED. But you also, through the new tariff, have the option to do a complete change-out. So we're excited about that, but we've picked these two areas, and we expect to begin work on those shortly. So, you know, one of the things we look to pull from this is the functionality of the controllers. If you're looking at top right, that is a picture of what the controller looks like. We've tested it thoroughly because obviously in Oklahoma, our weather is very, very unpredictable. And so we want to make sure that these things can withstand, and these controllers are pretty top-notch. That is a picture of a roadway light that will be going both areas. So we want to look and test the network stability, durability, obviously through weather, command-response, scheduling function. This is one of the biggest things that we've expressed with city officials that we would like to collaborate on. We want feedback, so we want to hear what people in your respective wards... We want feedback, so we want to hear what people in your respective wards are saying, you know, if they like the lights, if they... Now I'm sure they're going to notice them because they're pretty bright at times, so we want that community feedback, and we plan to test our dimming capabilities to see what's good, what works. If you've got a person in your ward that says, "Hey, this light is way too bright", we want to hear that feedback so that we can adjust. And again, my favorite function out of all of this is failure notifications. I think it's important, living in Oklahoma and driving down I-35 and different places throughout the city, as an O G and E member, we don't like it when we see lights that are out that we're noticing. Now we have the proactive and the technology now that, again, we will know before you know, and hopefully, we'll take it a step further, we'll get that thing repaired and fixed before you ever know about it. So in theory, we can reduce a lot of the calls and hopefully minimize the amount of lights that you see going down a road that are out there. Our goal is to be proactive, and with this new technology, I think it's going to give us an unbelievable opportunity to do that. So thank you. Again, I want to give you a quick snapshot of what we're doing. We're really, really excited about it, and hopefully this is step one as we move forward to a complete change-out of lighting. But the goal is to enhance our city, and we think LED lighting will be a big part of that.
Now, are these programmable, is that what you're telling me?
Yes, they are programmable.
So they won't be dimmed manually, it'll be, you'll just change the program and they'll dim naturally? So if at a certain time of the day or the night you wanted them dimmed, you could do that?
Absolutely.
Whether it's the street or a neighborhood.
Absolutely.
It's exciting technology. Thanks for taking the lead on this, and we look forward to a successful launch and hopefully a complete build-out throughout the entire city eventually. I know it's not a small city, but we really appreciate the work. Now, the poles stay, just the bulb and the... I don't know the right term, but just the installation?
Yes.
Just takes place?
Yes, we will put some new poles up as well with these lights as well. As far as changing out, I'm thinking you're asking existing lights, if we go out and change that. It'll be a case-by-case, we'll look at the pole, if the pole is... Some of the things we're trying to do now is retrofit a lot of the lights that are out there now to minimize costs. And so, we've got a team of guys that are looking at that even right now, that's one of the things we're going to start doing before we go with a complete deployment, because it could be as easy as us putting a new fixture on an existing pole. But we want to make sure the aesthetics are right, you know, especially in the decorative space, you want to make sure that everything matches up. But on the streetlight side of it all, if we can use the existing pole, we will.
Okay. Comments or questions from council?
Quick question. If a resident wanted to have a LED light put in place to replace a streetlight that's on their street, what's the process for that?
We're in the process of standing up that now. I will tell you, it's in the infancy stages. Once we got the word back from the commission that the tariff was approved, we began to start having those discussions now. I will tell you, just knowing a lot about the tariff and the way it's set up, in theory, if you call us and you want to change out an existing light to LED, there's a small conversion fee, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but that is the option. Obviously, the way the tariff is written is if it fails in service, meaning if the bulb goes out, if it's knocked down, whatever the case may be. But we are planning to have that option, because I just think once the public knows that LED is available, I think we're going to get a lot of calls for it. So, we're going to try to make, we're going to make provisions to do that.
Okay, the timeline. So if someone was to call today and request it, do they have that a great opportunity?
Not yet. We are about, I'd say, eight to nine months away from standing up the automated side of things, and that's what our plan is. We're going to do a public release on this pretty soon, just to give a little bit more information now that the tariff has been approved. But yeah, we're about eight to nine months away from being able to offer it to the public. So, we expect, now that the new year is here and we know the tariff is approved, I mean, this is what our team, this is all we're... Our goal right now is to get it going. If we can speed up that process, believe me, you, we're going to try to.
All right, thank you. All right. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Pat, Scott, Tony, and Nancy, thank you for your work on this. We look forward to a complete build-out.
Thank you.
All right, we're on item 3F of the council agenda. It's an appointment to the Joint Insurance Committee. Is there a motion?
Okay.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. 4A is to receive the journal for December 20th, and 4B is to approve the journal for December 6th and December 13th. Is there a motion there? Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
None this morning.
All right, any from council? Oh, we're moving right along. Item 6 is revocable permits. We're going to be hosting the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday Parade. Is there anyone here today? Well, come on up, gentlemen. Working on this effort?
Senator, I missed one thing, I am so sorry.
Okay.
Can we go back to the continuances?
Sure.
We have a matter...
You guys come on up, we're just taking care of some business here.
David, can you come on up? This is matter number 9B-1 and 2. It's dealing with PUD 1624, and the parties have an announcement that they want to make. There is a protest that presented itself today. I talked to both sides, and they would like to have the opportunity to meet here at City Hall and work out their differences, and so, we're asking this be deferred to the next meeting.
That's correct. I represent the applicant, Mr. Work represents the neighbors to north. We'd like to move this two weeks to provide an opportunity to meet with our clients as well as Councilman Stonecifer. And which item was that, Mark?
It is 9B-1 and 2.
9B-1 and 2, then deferred until January 17th. All right, thank you. Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Now we're on to the requests for a right-of-way permit for the Martin Luther King Jr. Parade. And introduce yourselves, tell us about the event.
Okay, I'm R. Eldor, the Chair, and this is Rosetta Milton, the Vice Chair. This is our 37th year of chairing this operation. I don't know what we've done wrong, but we're still stuck here. We're ready to put on the event. It will be an all-day event on the 16th. We will start immediately after the prayer breakfast in Midwest City, which is at 7:00 a.m., and we'll move from there to the Freedom Center, and we will open our ceremony there at 9:00 a.m. From there, we'll do a march to the Capitol or the History Center, where Governor Fallon will officiate our bell-ringing ceremony. From there, we'll come downtown here to the Episcopal Cathedral, we'll have our main body program, and of course, after that, we'll do the parade, which is at 2:00, 2:00 p.m. And it will be down Broadway to Main Street into Bricktown.
Right, that is a full day of events. Thanks for all the work that I know goes into that. John, you want to say a few words? This event is in Ward 7.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to say thank you to the Martin Luther King Coalition for continuing the parade and continuing the Martin Luther King events. We know that there's been challenges, but thank you for working through those challenges. And I also want to thank Automobile Alley and the Bricktown Association for continuing to work with the Martin Luther King Coalition. And again, I sure appreciate it. Of course, I will be at all the facilities prior to being a councilman. I was involved in the Martin Luther King activities and will continue to. So again, thank you all for continuing the legacy.
All right, it's in Ward 6 and 7. The two of you want to make a motion in a second?
I think so.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks for your work.
Okay, thank you all.
How many entries do you have in the parade this year? How many entries do you think?
A bunch.
A bunch.
We're trying to reduce the number, but they just keep on...
Want to make sure everybody comes down, it's really a fun day.
And again, that parade will be January 16th downtown and then on the near northeast side of Oklahoma City. We'll recess the council meeting convened as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are four items.
Move the items.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convened as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are five items, I understand item D requires executive session. So is there a motion to move item D of the PPA to executive session?
No.
Cast your votes, and that item moves to executive session. How about a motion on the rest of the PPA? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. So we'll recess the PPA and come back and finish that up after executive session. Convened is the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust.
Move the items.
All right, we have three items, I hear a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, cast your votes on the EAT. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Move the unsubjected individual considerations.
All right, are there any individual considerations?
F, Your Honor.
F.
Richard Frank.
I'm going to second Larry's F, and I'd like to talk about 17, Mayor.
T, okay. All right, Larry, you want to jump in with item F?
Yes, thank you. Item F is a way that neighbors can come together and remove signs that are in the city right-of-way that are distracting from the beauty or the safety of the area. There are a number of neighborhood associations who have signed up for the training and then to meet the requirements and the insurance requirements. My hat goes off to them because they're out there every day during the year trying to make our city more beautiful. I'd like to encourage other neighborhoods who might want to take up this same challenge so that we can make our neighborhoods more presentable around the city to remove this, what we call sometimes litter on a stick. Thank you, Your Honor.
I just wanted to mention, if I had a couple of complaints this year from citizens where we were removing, you know, people had purchased signs to show their support of Wilson Elementary School and some other things. And I just want to remind our neighbors, we really encourage you to do that, neighborhood and, you know, supportive causes that are important to you is critical, but please make sure those signs are in your yard and not in the right-of-ways, because they will be removed regardless of the message that you're sending. Those signs will be removed if they're in the right-of-way. So, there was some confusion about where those can and should go, and I just wanted to remind people to check the city ordinance, but make sure they are in your yard.
All right, any other comments or questions on the consent docket? Meg, you wanted to mention T also?
I did, I wanted to mention 17. This, I saw Eric Winger here earlier, I don't think he's here right now. Oh, Eric, you're right here. Do you want to share some comments about this, because it's a very significant day for Ward 6 and Ward 7?
I would be happy to. So, item T on the agenda today is the Notice of Establishment for our Downtown Quiet Zone. And so, what I can report to you today is that all that work is now 100% complete, all the inspections are complete. And so, with your authorization today, the mayor will be authorized to sign this Notice of Establishment, which will then be forwarded to the federal rail administration, and we would expect to hear back very shortly on the actual creation of the quiet zone, which will hopefully silence a lot of the downtown whistles. So, I don't know the exact timeline, it could be a few days, it'd be a couple more weeks, but we're really that close. This is that final step for your consideration.
I really want to say thank you to Eric and the staff. This has been, I really think I may have been working on this for about eight years. And I want to recognize also that this is another mayor-public-private partnership. Over $600,000 in private money was raised to help support this effort. And it's, we've just come a really long way, it's taken tenacity and determination, Eric, and we really appreciate everything you've done. I hope we'll have a little bit more of a formal celebration when we actually get the notice, but it's an important day, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor?
Uh-huh.
I'd just like to comment on 7G. I see some representatives here from the Vietnamese community, and I'd just comment to congratulate them for continuing to move this project forward. I think it's going to be a great addition to Oklahoma City, well-located in terms of visibility. I just wanted to acknowledge that I personally, and I'm sure the council is pleased with the progress of this idea.
Yeah. I'm glad you brought that up, really appropriate thing for us to do. Thank you for all the work that you put into this. All right, we ready to vote on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right, we're on to the concurrence docket.
Let's move those out in a second. Any considerations?
All right, I hear a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the concurrence? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We're on to item 9. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a series of zoning cases. The first is an ABC issue in Ward 8 at 4401 West Memorial Road. Mark?
Yes, please, just one second.
Okay.
This is a matter for...
Thank you. I'm having a little trouble today, I'm so sorry. This is a matter that is on final hearing, an ordinance on final hearing for ABC-1 permit. It's for the Hayway Restaurant, which we're excited to announce will be opening on Memorial with a host of other great restaurants. There's no one here in opposition, it was passed by the Planning Commission on November 10th, so I'd move for its approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on item 9A-1 before we vote? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A-2 is a zoning case in Ward 5 at 14432 Southwestern. It's currently AA agricultural, and it would become an O-2 general office if approved. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an item to provide development of a small office center along Southwestern Avenue north of 149th Street. It was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. Francis, is there anyone here to discuss? Okay. Based upon that, and one final comment, a lot of this area was destroyed back with the 2013 tornado, and it's good to see development come back into this area, and it's a great area, and we hope development will continue on. So I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A-2. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A-3 is a zoning case in Ward 4 at 10918 Southeast 59th. It's currently C-3 Community Commercial, and it would become a new spud if approved. Pete?
Is the applicant president? Is there a protest? I received a protest letter concerning the gravel parking lot. Comment?
That's correct. It was, they have an existing small gravel lot and they want to expand some gravel for storage. There's property directly to the northeast that already has an existing gravel parking lot. There's a lot of parking gravel driveways and...
Is this immediately adjacent to the Dollar General? I intended, I intended to go by and look at it, but a five-day weekend just wasn't long enough to fit it in.
The Dollar General's on the north, is northeast there on the corner, and this is several hundred...
I think the complainant was the Dollar General.
Right. So this is several hundred feet east of the Dollar General, west of the Dollar General, sorry.
Okay. Is it typical to have gravel parking lots and facilities? I know we're out in the country and here, but is that typical, to permit gravel?
It is. In this area, we, staff looked at it, and there are several gravel lots like this in this rural area. You know, this is a, an activity that won't, there won't be a lot of customers in and out, like the Dollar General probably will be, but our evaluation of it was that it was an acceptable proposal.
Is it acceptable because it's in southeast Oklahoma City, or is it acceptable?
No, it's acceptable because it's a good application.
I move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions on item 9A-3? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A-4 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 1620 Northwest 17th Street. It's currently R-2 Medium Low Density Residential and an urban conservation district, and it's going to be put into a spud if approved. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. Is the applicant here? Great. There were no protesters at the Planning Commission. This is an opportunity for some, what our OKC Plan calls responsible infill development, creating a little bit higher density in a, this is a project just off of the Plaza District. There's an existing bungalow on the property, and this will add three new similar little bungalows on the same site. Bob, I did have a quick question, and this just may be me, but there were some technical requirements, and the language says additional changes to the spud may be required during either division review of construction plans and prior to city council approval. Is that new language that we're adding in to the TEs that say, you know, that we may have to amend it during this process?
No, that's a standard comment.
That's standard, well, it sounded, something about it sounded different to me. In any case, this looks like a wonderful project, and I would move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A-4. We're voting on item 9A4. Any other comments or questions? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A5 is also in Ward 6 at 1541 Northwest 2nd Street. It's currently R3 medium-density, and it would become a new spud if approved. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this request is to create a commercial painting facility. There were no protests at the planning commission. It was approved unanimously, and I would move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A5. Cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. Item 9B has been deferred until January 17th. So that moves us on to item 9C, and this is an amendment to a master design. It has to do with some rezoning in Ward 6. Meg, you want to explain this further?
Yes, this is another project in the Plaza District, multifamily mixed-use project just east of the Plaza District. Is the applicant here on this project? Great, do you want to tell us anything about this, or? No comment? Okay. Great. This actually is, as I said, just east of the Plaza District. There's a project going on right across the street, already under construction. There were no protests. I did note that parking is being provided, at least one space per unit, and parking, as you know, is a major issue in the Plaza District.
We're hearing about it.
We're hearing about it, and we're working on it. So I've got a meeting scheduled for next week with the association to talk about what we might be able to do. But I was pleased to see at least we've got a space per unit here, and that should help. So I would move approval of this project.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9C 1 and 2. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9D came to us from the traffic commission. It's up for final hearing today. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on item 9D? All right, how about a motion then to approve? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9E is our annual opportunity to look at the Adventure District Business Improvement Assessment District, and this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that showed up today hoping to speak? All right, are you here to answer questions if the council has any, or are you in opposition to any phase of this? Well, come on up then, and let's hear your comments so everybody can hear them. Yeah?
My name is Kim Edwards. I've lived in the Adventure District now for 17 years, and I noticed at the beginning, when they first started the project, it was just a big hurrah, and, you know, we were really, the neighbors were getting really excited. And it just kind of lulled, and it came to kind of to a standstill. And we know that that area is almost as important as downtown. And we get a lot of people come through there. You've got the softball Hall of Fame, you've got the zoo, you've got Remington Park, you've got the science museum. You have so many things there, you've got Coles Garden, but there's not any restaurants. I think there's maybe one Italian restaurant, then we have McDonald's and Subway. I mean, so with that area being so important to Oklahoma City, I think we need to take measures to promote it and find out if we can get people to invest in it. Because right now, like I said, it's stagnant. I've been there 17 years, I live right off 63rd and Prospect. I haven't seen anything grow with the trees. Okay? So I'm thinking it's something that really needs to be looked at because, like I said, when you say adventure, you see excitement, and I don't see that. I just see that they put up a nice sign, and that's it. So I'm just saying that anything that we could do to make that area just as visible as downtown Bricktown, I mean, that would be, I think I rank it number two. You know, you've got Bricktown, then you've got the Adventure District. So I just think they need to come through and do an assessment and, you know, just see how we can make it better. Only thing I've seen, they put a sidewalk in. That's great. You get a few more walkers, you get a few things, but as far as places to eat, say for example, when they have a softball Hall of Fame, tournaments, it's gugabs of people, but then they have to go downtown to eat. You know, a lot of people don't want to just do Subway and McDonald's. Okay? So I'm just thinking maybe if they're, do some type of, you know, promotion.
Right.
To make it better.
Well, why don't we, why don't we hear from the people at the Adventure District here?
Ben, he's, he's, he has a few words.
Okay.
He's a businessman there.
All right.
Ben John Lou, I've been doing business in that area over 20 years.
And which business is yours?
Well, I have a gas station and a restaurant.
And where is it located?
Right on I-44 and Cali.
Okay.
But we haven't seen any improvement. I talked to John a few times, so we have...
Now, I get my gas from his gas station.
So we got together to see if we could do something to move faster, to get more people in that area.
Right. And what I've heard is you'd like more promotion for the area?
There's a man that's available for development.
Uh huh.
I mean, there's, I mean, there's nothing, I mean, there's nothing there. I mean, for, I mean, if you have an adventure district, you have so many things going on in that area. Why not, let's get some, maybe a restaurant, maybe, you know, something other than just trees and, you know, animals, coyotes.
Right, you just want more commerce in the area.
Yeah, more commerce.
Yeah, well, let's hear, let's hear from the people that run the district, and I'm sure promotion of the district is part of what they're, what they're charged with doing, but let's hear more about it. Are you Tiffany?
Yes.
Yeah, come on up. If you go, if you gentlemen will move away from the microphone and allow her to...
It was exciting, it was exciting at first, right there at interest going into my neighborhood, Semin Hills. If anybody's familiar with Semin Hills, it's, it's been there for a long time, actually. It's, if you go back in the history of it, there were settlers there. I mean, it's, it's got a lot of history, rich history. And actually, last year, we were voted, I think, Neighborhood of the Year, you know, we had the best neighborhood or something to that effect, but I just think it needs to be looked at as far as, you know, creating some type of retail, something.
Right. No, I sense you're enthused about it. You want, you want more. Some people come against the business district and they're against it.
Adventure District may have little marquees, but there's no adventure other than just, when you go to these other places like the Remington Park or the zoo, you know, you have to just eat Remington Park food or zoo food.
Right.
Because, not, I don't know, the zoo. You know, who they have there.
Right.
I mean, you have, I mean, you have, like, the lander, at one point, right there at Marlon King and 63rd, they were talking about building something big right there on that corner that, that would be the southeast corner, signs gone down, but just, I just think we need to...
Okay, if you guys will have a seat, we'll hear from Tiffany and see what they've got working.
Well, this is, I...
We need your name and address for the record.
Tiffany Batdorf. I live at 7918 Harvest Moon Road. I am the manager for Oklahoma City's Adventure District. As you guys know, this is, we've just completed our first year of the bid. We do, we are just as passionate, our board, as our community members. And I agree, we all agree, restaurants, we need restaurants, we need hotels. That's our goal. But what we have to work through, I mean, there's a process. We, I've actually met, Councilman Pettis has brought in several potential hotel developers and restaurant developers. We've met with them. We run into the issue that a lot of them think we're seasonal, so we're really working hard to kind of bring up those numbers and let people know that we're not just a summer district, that we do have activity year-round. We're working on creating a retail development plan to kind of entice some business, new businesses. We want to make sure that what we do is good for everyone. And so we really are, I mean, we're trying to work really hard on that. It is a process, though. We've, like I said, we've, the Adventure District's been around for a while, but running on very minimal budget. And so this first year of the bid has really been great, and we've been able to do a lot of things. The second year, we did a lot of maintenance things the first year that we needed to do in the past.
Yeah, I'm sure there was a lot of deferred ideas out there. Their idea of more restaurants, more diverse restaurants, is that something you think would reflect on the board's want list as well?
Yes, it is. And like I said, we spoke with a couple, and we actually have identified, we worked with the chamber to kind of identify the types of restaurants that would fit out there. We've identified those. Now it's getting to those developers to bring them in and talk to them. And we've, we've met with probably six, I think, different developers with different restaurant chains. It's just getting someone to take that first step.
Right. Okay. Well, as you continue to look for board members, it sounds like you have a couple of excited activists out there who might want to be a part of your discussions going forward. Thanks for your work.
And now, just to add on to the concerns about creating economic development, excuse me, in the Adventure District, we do know from previous studies that the Adventure District and supporters of the Adventure District have conducted and paid for that the area does in fact support the need for restaurants, the need for retail. And we have been working nonstop to try to bring in those developers who are not afraid to come into the area. For the first time in, in quite a while, the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, their new marketing material now covers the Adventure District versus before, when the chamber marketed Oklahoma City, the Adventure District, it was just one sentence. But now, in their marketing materials, they actually have a page or two about the Adventure District. And so the chamber is working aggressively along with the Adventure District people and along with myself to try to get in developers who will come in. And the six developers that the Adventure District met with, those are developers, vast majority of those are developers who I have been actively recruiting to get them to come into northeast Oklahoma City. And we do have some local developers here who's taking a good look at the Adventure District. So we're doing everything we can to make that area have those opportunities, those same opportunities as other areas in our city. The Adventure District is very dear to my heart because I grew up in the area, still live in the area, went to school in the area. And so we're, we're doing everything we can to get things going. But again, we, it's been a slow process. It's been a very, very slow process, but we are working diligently and hard trying to get retailers, developers in, into that area. We've had some, some major chains, restaurants look at the area, but nobody wants to be the first. So it's a matter of trying to get the first to get in. Once we're able to get the first, then I think we can really get some things happen in the area. So again, thank you, Tiffany. Thank you to the Adventure District. Thank you, Ben. I do see, we do have another residence. Thank you, Brother Edwards, Ms. Kay Hamilton, former board member of Millwood. Just one quick question, as we're involved with the residents in the Adventure District. Residents are exempt from paying the extra tax, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right, all right, thank you. All right, thanks for coming down. Tom, you also signed up to speak. You want to come up?
Yes. Thank you. My name is Dal McCarty. I am owner and operator of Twin Fountains RV Resort in the Adventure District. I've been there almost, well, 10 years, been operating 10 years. The Adventure District, I keep hearing all about it, and we see banners up, that I do. And I don't know if I'm in the wrong spot on this because my hearing's not good enough to know exactly where I'm at. But my concern is that last year, assessment, and if that's part of what we're talking about, I thought the assessment was to be used to advertise, promote, maybe develop streets or whatnot. It's been a year, that assessment was like $9,000. Seems to me like that was pretty excessive amount of assessment. I don't know who, who it is that's in charge of making the assessment, it's collected, it's used for what purpose? Who accounts for that money that's being spent? What is the purpose of it? What are they doing with it? How much was collected last year? I don't see any, any figures or any reports of what the money's being used for. This seems to me like my taxes since I opened up have gone up from $1,400 a year now to over $52,000 a year for my property.
If...
And now this is just an additional assessment that it fits as much as it was last year? And is every member in that, every property owner in that Adventure District assessed? Or is it just the businesses? And since there is a lot of museums and other things in the area?
Yeah, Tiffany, can you give him the information? It doesn't have to be right now, but when, before he leaves here today? They're going to make sure you have the information you just requested before you leave here today.
I would like to, yeah, because it seems to me like I'm just getting more and more taxes, and I'm not saying anything for...
I feel for you.
I belong to the Frontier Country Group, and I promote that, and I'm not against it.
Right, I understand. In case you couldn't hear, part of her response was that in the first year, there were a lot of deferred things that they needed to take care of, but my suspect, you're going to start seeing a little more visible results with your, with your tax dollars that they're assessing.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't really seen anything.
Well, I guess on their behalf, I ask for a little bit more patience, and perhaps they can make sure that you're involved in the process. It sounds like here we have some people who care about the district, but they're a little bit disconnected from those that are making the decisions. So perhaps you guys can invite these people that have come up here today and try to make sure that they're involved in the discussion. There are worse things than having people that care. And so, believe me, they don't hear you as complaining, they hear you as someone who wants the district to succeed and wants to be a part of the process. So I'm trying to get that to the next level. Thanks for coming down today, and we have someone else that come up. Yeah, Tom?
Thank you. I'm Tom Parrish. I'm a resident of Oklahoma City, and I'm managing partner of Grand Wood's LLC. We own 26 acres across the street, excuse me, from Remington Park, which encompasses the McDonald's retail thing all the way back to Grand Boulevard. The reason I'm here today, I didn't know there was an assessment, and well, I just kind of want to know what that's about, and I'm all for, you know, the Adventure District and things. I'm like Dal, our real estate taxes have increased from the time we owned this property around $15,000 in one year. I don't even know, how's the assessment calculated, or how's that work? I don't know. So I need some information.
It's in a similar method as your real estate taxes, but it's, yeah, it's a special assessment.
Is it part of the real estate taxes?
No, it's a separate process, and we, we kind of provide some oversight along with the business owners that run the board. So Tom, I would, I would just urge you to get more involved and perhaps, you know, volunteer to serve as part of it with your real estate background. I'm sure they could use your expertise in there.
Let me make one other statement.
Okay.
The 26 acres is unimproved, and I don't know if there's any differential in assessment value, unlike having improved properties if you're up and running in business like McDonald's, for example.
Right. Well, let's find out.
Is one...
Is that a question for staff, or is that a question for this individual district?
I think Kim can come down and answer.
Okay. Yeah, the question, as I understood it, is are the assessment values different for someone who's improved the property as opposed to sitting on raw land in the area?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Mayor Council. The formula for assessment for ad valorem properties, that is, properties that aren't exempt, it's based on a portion of their taxable assessed value. So an unimproved parcel of property will be valued less than an improved piece of property by the county. So there's just kind of a natural, you know, decrease to what your assessment would be when your property's unimproved. The exempt properties in the area pay by frontage, linear frontage, because there is no taxable assessed value to base an assessment on. And that's how we create the assessments for the Adventure District.
Okay, and those museums and other things that might be, might be not responsible for taxes, they are responsible to be part of this assessment district?
They are. They're paying by linear footage, frontage on MLK, 50th Grand and 63rd.
Okay.
So the county health department, zoo, museums, softball, all the large...
They're all paying in.
Cowboy, all of them, even though they're nonprofits and they don't have property taxes, they are paying into the bid.
And the majority of, if we look at who actually is paying for what, the vast majority of... or entities such as the City of Oklahoma City, the county, as well as those different museums. Am I correct?
Yes, your-
The vast majority, we are actually the ones who, we kind of taxing ourselves as well as taxing others. Is that also correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, is it also correct that the only group that we are not giving that extra tax to are single family residential properties, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Any property that's under the residential account category with the county, even if it's undeveloped, is not included in the assessment, although they are in the territory, we do notice them and we would like to include them in reports and communications.
Okay, and so I know people have questions. This is what I want to do, is schedule a meeting with the parties who have shown up in support of, who want to know more information. So we will get a meeting scheduled so everyone can be on the same page in regards to this Adventure District. So we'll get that meeting set up.
All right, Tom, how much are you being assessed, if you don't mind saying?
That's what I'm here to find out. I don't know. Maybe I shook up with the wrong thing.
Well, you should have gotten a statement in the mail. You should have gotten a statement in the mail that showed the level of assessment. I live in the Business Improvement District and get one.
My attorney is for-
Okay, somebody may have gotten it and just hadn't made it to you.
Thing about public charity of assessment, that's the first we've known about it.
Tom, it's actually in the agenda, in the agenda packet, there is an assessment role that you can look up, your property parcel.
Well, I guess I'm showing up just to get information.
Kim would have that available for you.
And the other thing, and I've certainly talked to councilman Pettis on our land, is having a really economic development package for the Adventure District, including the number of people, I think it's assessed at 5 million people now in the district. And I've yet to have access, I've talked to Tiffany, but haven't got a conclusive package that, when you have someone from out of state, or out of town even, coming to a district to present.
We will, and okay, so what we're going to do with that, again, we're going to get with Tiffany and I'm going to attend that meeting so we can make sure that you have every single thing that you need. Then on top of that, the Chamber also has some information. So we're going to work with you on your concerns and make sure you have everything you need for the 26 acres. The Adventure District folks, they do have the information, they're willing to sit down with you to help you in regards to your 26 acres and as well as the Chamber of Commerce. Keep in mind, as I stated before, for the first time this year, the Chamber has actually really started to promote that area. So we're going to make sure that you have every single thing that you need and we're going to again, set up a meeting with everyone who has some concerns because there seems to be some miscommunication. So we can get over the miscommunication, communication, we're going to all sit down and so everybody will have the information.
I'm all for this, we're here to improve that sector of the city, so forcing my concern.
All right, thanks Tom.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else here want to speak on the Adventure Business District? Yeah, come on forward.
Thank you, sir. Again, my name is Michael C. Washington, esteemed members. First of all, I had walked in on the back end of what you're discussing today. However, I'm a little disturbed as well as Mr. Pettis and I want to tell you, first of all, sir, if I'm not included in this adventure or this meeting, I will file a civil rights lawsuit against you for discrimination purposes. I heard you say, and you just heard him say, for those who has an interest in it, not Michael Washington, anyone else, we just heard him clearly say.
What's your interest, Mike?
My interest is in the development of the northeast side of Oklahoma City where I currently reside, sir. And I do not like the discriminatory measures that this man is deliberately taking by taking undercut table profits to make sure his friends get these deals.
That's a little bit off the subject here. We're talking about the Adventure Business District. Do you have any comments on that?
Yes, I'm saying that. I have a problem with monies possibly being cited with friendship, which I don't have much to know about, I'd like to know more about this, since I'm a concerned citizen and my taxpayer dollars, yes, I do work, are going into this so-called, what's the name of that again?
We're talking about the Business Improvement District.
Business Improvement District, right. And it's going to be taxpayers' dollars, actually from the Taxicam and Finance, I'm sure is going to be paying for some of it.
If you live in the district, you will, yeah.
Yes, I do. Okay, now then. So therefore, I want to be included in on this man, which again, I don't respect anything he has to say because I know he's a liar.
All right.
But I would like to be a part of that program, Mayor, and all my witnesses here.
I think they are.
And when there's a meeting set up, Mr. Pettis, you will include me or the whole community will file a civil rights lawsuit against you for discrimination. Thank you very much. I will get more information on this, thank you so much.
Thanks for coming down. All right, this is a public hearing, we need to vote on the resolution, item 9E2. Is there a second? All right, cast your votes, it passed unanimously. And then 9F is to adopt and set the assessment role for the district. All right, cast your votes and it passed unanimously. Item 9G is an item that's being introduced today and these are some changes that are necessary due to some changes in state law. We're just introducing the item today. Jim, are we going to have any sort of presentation on this?
We are. Jane Abraham is supposed to be here to discuss this with us.
Yes. Good morning.
Hello, I'm Jane Abraham with the City Manager's Office. And I'm just going to talk a little bit about the ordinance changes coming before you, just from the legislative side of things. And then Cindy Richard is here from the Municipal Counselor's Office, if there are any questions in terms of the legal aspect. This is basically brought about by the bill that was passed last session to increase the fee for 911 on- to increase the fees on wireless accounts from 50 cents per line per month to 75 cents per line. And that goes, that went into effect on January 1st. So 5 cents of the increase will support a statewide coordinator and then 20 cents of the increase will be going to the PSAPS to provide 911 service. Several changes in the bill that create, or in the law now, previously, the wireless companies sent the fee to the various council of governments that were administering those. Now, it will all go to the Tax Commission and be divided out according to population. And so there are also additional reporting requirements for the PSAPS and provisions to allow for consolidation where there's duplication of coverage and that type of thing. So the idea is that we'll be able to improve 911 service statewide with those provisions. And so this ordinance change just brings us in line with the new state statute.
All right, any comments or questions from council?
Well, Oklahoma City received the money directly, I miss her-
Yes, we will. It'll come through the Tax Commission.
It'll come directly from the Tax Commission, doesn't it?
Correct.
Won't go through the COGS like the rest of them are doing.
That is correct, yes. It used to come through the COGS, now it's all going to be coming through the Tax Commission.
All right, and this item is up for public hearing on January 17th and final adoption on January 31st. Is there a motion for the item to be introduced today? All right, cast your votes. It's passed unanimously. Item 9H is our collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI. Looks like we're good to go in this area?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Second? All right, cast your votes, it passed unanimously. We're on to item 9I, understand we do not need executive session on this item?
Do not.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9I and that item moves forward. Item 9J, understand we do not need executive session?
Do not.
Is there a motion then to approve the resolution? Cast your votes, passed unanimously. Item 9K, understand we do not need executive session on this item either? Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Cast your votes, it passed unanimously. Puts us on to items from council. James, you have anything for us today? All right, Larry?
Yeah, just like to take a minute to remind the neighbors in southwest area of Oklahoma City and all the people in Oklahoma City really, that coming up in January and February is a series, one for each ward, dealing with the general obligation bond package to inform all the citizens and get their input back on whether they want to go forward with the general obligation bond and if they do, what projects they'd like to have included in there. For the people in southwest Oklahoma City, our meeting is going to be February the 2nd from 5 to 8 o'clock PM at the Windsor Hills Elementary School. You can find out about where the meetings are in your area by going to the Oklahoma City website. Thank you.
All right, thanks Larry. Pete? All right, David?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment, since we had a nice discussion on the Adventure District about retail development in general. You know, we can do a lot of things, but until you find that developer or business owner who has an interest in locating in a particular area, we are limited to some degree. Now, I think what these bids districts do provide is information about the particular area, which is helpful. It shows support, local support for continued economic development, but you know, I can just think of four areas, the I-240 area that we've been working on for past several years, Stockyards, Capitol Hill, along Southwestern Avenue. There's a lot of areas we would like to see further development occur, but until you get that entrepreneur to step forward and say, hey, this is an area I want to invest money in and take risks, we're somewhat limited as to what the city can do. And I get a lot of questions about what can the city do? Well, we can assist in certain areas, but it really needs an interest by that entrepreneur to come in and make the investment. And so going back to I-240, you know, we've been working on that and now all of a sudden Walmart puts in a new facility on Southwest 104th and I-44. That whole mile section is now planned for future development. And yet, we could spend all day long talking to people about the, you know, the benefits of moving along I-240, but it's where the retailers want to be, where they perceive is the best location for their particular business. So just wanted to voice that.
Since you have it on the subject, I was sorry to hear Pioneer Pie is closing its door down on I-240.
Yeah.
I guess I'd been to all three of their locations around the city and they said business was still good, they were just getting out of the restaurant business, going to retire.
Hey, that is the toughest business, you know, we serve a lot of different clients as CPA and people have a misconception that, oh, that's an easy way to get into business. I've eaten, I've gone out to eat a lot in my life, so I can run a restaurant. They are the most challenging business and for someone to be in business as long as they have, really is quite an achievement.
It really is.
I mean, it's like with them, it's seven days a week, early morning, late nights.
Well, they went out with a bang because after the article showed up in the paper, Terry and I decided to go there and have lunch and the line was out the door and we couldn't get in.
That's what I heard.
So the people were wanting that last slice of French silk, I think, pie and couldn't get, so we ended up at Charleston's.
Yeah, well, you know, and they've been the benefactor of a lot of people because I've heard similar stories. But it just goes to show you, it is tough to get into business and retail especially is so competitive. But just to let everybody know, we would love to see more retail development in Oklahoma City. It's our lifeblood from a revenue source, but you got to convince those business people to take that risk and make that investment. And even though, Pete, I know you'd love to see further development in Capitol Hill, I would too, Stockyards, that areas continues to just, I cannot explain why there's not been more development from a restaurant, nightclub type environment and even traditional retail along with I-240. I mean, I know everybody up here could name an area that they're familiar with that we would love to see more development, but you know, it takes that business to step forward and make that investment. Thank you.
Meg?
I really just want to wish everybody a happy new year, but I would like to follow on David's province because I had the same feeling as we were listening to these discussions. You know, in the 30 years I've been in Oklahoma City, I've been very involved in a few of these areas. And what it comes back to is it is the local folks that make it happen. It's a very place centric kind of a thing. And the Plaza District, you know, continues to come to mind as one of the best examples. Every one of those little businesses is a homegrown, local entrepreneur, you know, in this case typically young people that when they started their business, you know, slept in the back of their stores or slept up above, worked seven days a week to make it happen. It wasn't, you know, the city provided the streetscape, so you can say that we created a sense of place. We had the benefit, the Plaza District had the benefit of Lyric Theater that decided to be the anchor and brought people there. But once that happened, it was the local folks, the local neighbors, that made it happen. That's what will make it happen in Capitol Hill, it's what made it happen in Automobile Alley. And it wasn't just one person. And that's what makes either the Main Street program work so well or the work that Kim Cooper-Hart's doing with the Commercial Revitalization District. It has to be local buy-in. So when you get somebody that comes with so much enthusiasm and says, we want a restaurant or we want a store, maybe he can figure out how to open that store and do it in place with local support. And that really is what drives these small commercial revitalization districts, is local people buying in to their neighborhood to make it happen because we can't do it, except as David said, assist in, you know, creating sometimes a streetscape or a sense of place that will draw people there.
Right. Well put. Mark?
Let me add, could I add something to the end of that? Excuse me, Mark. I'm following that same thought. I think what's happened on Commerce Street is an example of that. It will happen. We are, in the last 18 months, the two theaters that are still located on 25th Street have changed hands, local ownership, aggressive, the people that have track records of development there, I think that's going to happen. And with Oklahoma City Community College opening up that corner, the Katz Langston corner there, if anybody hadn't been by and seen that is, needs to because it's a, I think that's going to happen. I think the Successive Grill on the Hill is just phenomenal. I mean, they're now staying open in evenings, some, I mean, it's, but it's local people. Meg, that's absolutely correct. It's local people willing to put up the money. I, you know, we could follow the pattern that some other cities have followed with regard to retail and restaurants where we rebate huge portions of the sales tax. I think in the long run, that's not the way to do it. I think the way we pursue it is a much more sound way of doing it. It's slower sometimes, but the risk that you have in giving away part of your operating base is too great to do it. I think we're going to see 25th Street, soon as I get out of here, you know, 25th Street will do everything I always wanted it to do, but it is right on the cusp of happening right now. I mean, it has local ownership that I think is very aggressive about changing that.
All right, Mark?
Just a couple of things, Your Honor. I received some emails concerning Bluff Creek Park and the closure of some trails to pedestrians that are, some plans to implement those changes. And the one thing I wanted to do was have Doug Cupper come up and explain the changes that are proposed. I also wanted everyone to know that there have been several news articles on television about this and I am going to be meeting with some of the people that live in and around Bluff Creek Park on January the 12th at 6 o'clock PM at Church of the Thirteenth to discuss these issues. I think this is a good problem in that your initiatives, Mayor, to get people out, to get people to eat better, to be more health conscious, we have people that are wanting to get out and use trails and that's a good thing, that's a really good thing. But I think that there are several news stories that are out there that are trying to explain what's happening and I just wanted people to hear from the city as to where we're at and where we're going to go from here.
Okay. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. As Councilmember Stonecifer said, we received quite a few comments from the public that used Bluff Creek Park, that there is a perceived conflict. We've had some near collisions, we've had a- We've had a couple of people that have been injured through no fault of their own's, not really anybody's fault, it's just bicycles versus pedestrians, runners on a technical bicycle off-road trail. We received those comments. We decided to do a Survey Monkey, get the word out, see what kind of comments we might get back from the user groups out there. So we contacted the Earthbike Fellowship folks. They got the word out that we were doing this survey. We got the information to the Oklahoma City Runners Club so we could get a cross-section. We did have 350 people participate in that survey and we brought those results back to the Trails Advisory Committee to educate them that there is a concern out there to see what kind of information they might need to collect further or if they wanted to make a decision. The Trails Advisory Committee recommended to us that we sign the trail that it is for bicycles only, no dog walkers, no children's and strollers, and no runners. What Mr. Stonecifer has said is, we've got great input. We are getting contact from the community on this issue and we think there is room for more dialogue on it. We will continue to pursue what the Trails Committee has advised us. We haven't made the signs yet. We're working on the terminology, but we want to get out there and talk to the public. We want to make sure we're taking care of the public. We are offering the opportunity to create an off-road running trail out there in conjunction with the off-bike trail system. So we want this conversation to have. We want this conversation to go forward. We want to make sure we're providing for the recreational needs of all.
Okay.
And so again, January 12th, 6:00 p.m., Church of the Servant. We want to hear everybody's ideas. We want to hear everybody's thoughts. We want to see if we need additional trails. This is a good thing, not a bad thing. And the one thing I noticed in watching the news stories is that the runners groups and the biking groups have come together and they discussed, I think it was on Sunday, out of the park, is this a bad thing? Is it a good thing? And many thought, it was necessary. I mean, animals, dogs, yes, that is, creates a safety issue, but we need to get input from everybody and this is a first step.
Okay. Well, thanks for all that meaning. And again, it's when?
It's January 12th, 6:00 p.m., Church of the Servant.
All right.
And then one other thing, real quick. Today is the first day of classes at John Marshall and I'm proud to say it's the first day for the Horticultural Class at John Marshall, which is a big deal in my mind. This is a class that had been canceled because of budget cuts and there were a lot of people that came together. There were like 50 students that were interested in this class. And so we had 25 students that started class today at 7:35 a.m. And I wanted to thank Principal Carlson for being instrumental in making this happen. I wanted to thank OSU Cooperative Extension, including Ladonna Hines, that helped make this happen. I really want to thank Ann Napier. She is the person that's teaching this as a volunteer, five days a week from 7:35 to 8:25. Also want to thank Ty Hartwig from Total Environmental. We are excited about this class. The kids want to attend this class and we're hoping we can grow it into two classes in the future. So today's the first day, hopefully many more. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. City Manager reports?
There are two reports in your packet this morning. One is the follow-up from the council workshop regarding the GO. There were several questions that were asked. Hopefully those responded to some of the information the council asked for. I think there's a couple more follow-up items that we're going to do beyond that. And then we do have the December 16 Sales and Use Task Report. It was not good. The collections were 6% below last year's collections. We're not in a good trend right now. We're hopeful as we go forward that 2017 will bring us, will bring us a little bit of recovery.
All right. Citizens to be heard. I'll ask those who speak to keep their comments to three minutes or less. Michael Washington?
Again, thank you, Mayor. Esteemed members, I see one of my friends not here. Anyhow, I want, my concerns today is this tax increment finance initiative, especially for the northeast side of Oklahoma City. It seems that our city councilman, if that's what he calls himself, I really don't respect him as such, it seems that his mind is so geared toward perfecting the interest of big business rather than the little people like myself's and that's about to end pretty soon. For the most part, we have three areas of main concern to me that I would like to express a moment. I know I don't have but three minutes, so I'll try to be as brief as possible. I'm long-winded. However, this so-called 36-inch street development at the, what is that, Northeast Shopping Mall, is a farce. Not only do you have more than $2 million given into this project in and of itself, but you also have an act of, not, I started to say recidivism, I meant to say nepotism, where this man's brother-in-law is hoarding, or actually have been hired for the most part by this Ed Shadie, no, that's his nephew, Char Shadie. Okay. It seems like to me that this money is not being spent in the most profitable manner and in a way to interest the northeast side. For the most part, the major three that I want to speak on quickly, let me get out of here, is that this money that these developers are doing here, as well as the so-called store on 23rd Street that is somehow or another vanquished due to some so-called contamination, what a joke. And then the school district down on 16th Stonewall that this developer is redoing. Again, this is money not for our community. This is money that's being taken in, using my money to rent it maybe, which again, I don't know, I'm not going to have that kind of money. The money is leaving the northeast side because the developers, are you ready for this, don't live in my community and nor will they be giving money back to my community. And this has me of great concern in which, again, I know that nothing can be approved but by, first of all, the city council and you have other pre-approval committees as well, I understand all that, but at the same time, we need for the northeast side to be given the same representation, not for the big, I'm a little guy. I run a nonprofit organization for children. Our world has changed your world and your world will change around you. That's our motto, okay? I go around, I tackle gang violence. I go around, I tackle truancy. Oh, Michael Washington don't just talk. I'm pretty sure a lot of you may not know me, but you've seen the writings and things that I do. I'm one of those people that don't take mess, no disrespect to anyone, not concerning you, but I'm saying, if someone says you with me, you're going to do something, you're going to do it and not talk about it. So I'm that kind of person. Not only that, I tackle domestic violence. Those things like that are concerning me, but I don't have the money to do this. And I don't like for the fact, like I said, the money is being here and then we're just being totally excluded. And my, and my point is actually touching the lower person. I'm actually touching the lower people who needs it. Bar no race creed or color, no one to see in any publications, any writings, anything cut out of my mouth while I say that I'm better than you or you're less than me because I'm not going to allow that from you or anybody else. If someone comes down and says something bad about you not being equal, you know what I'm going to say? Let's go to that person.
All right, Mike, thanks.